Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for Thursday, January 22, 2015. We have a revised agenda tonight. I'm afraid the cold that everybody's been sharing has struck. So, the order tonight is approval of minutes, questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda, entertainment license for the Quarry Restaurant. We're having a joint session with the Hingham Light Board to interview a candidate for the vacancy on the Light Board, a financial policy update with Greg McKeon, discussion on the Code of Conduct for the Board of Selectmen, and this is only an initial discussion. And then memorandum of agreement for the Hingham Fighter Fires Union, appointments, Selectmen and Town Administrator Reports, and then we have an executive session to discuss collective bargaining. And I'll also say we are cable televised tonight. So, with that, do we have any minutes of approval?
I'll move that we approve January 15, 2015, as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody with questions from the audience? Okay. And why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what you're here for?
My name is Julie Laduke and I'm the President of the Quarry Restaurant. I'm looking to get a entertainment license for two reasons. One, to have three televisions in our lounge and our bar area. And the second reason is to do live entertainment between the hours of 7:00 PM and 1:00 AM, seven days a week.
Nice. Well, you have a great restaurant.
Thank you.
We enjoy it very much.
Thank you. We try really hard.
And we have talked to Chief Poreno and he doesn't have any problems with us. I'll open it up to Paul.
I'd echo that. I've had the pleasure of dining at your fine establishment and enjoyed it tremendously.
Thank you.
Although I wasn't in the bar, but I don't see any problem with doing this.
So he says.
I got witnesses.
Paul?
No, that's fine.
Do you want to introduce who's in the audience? I can't pass it up.
Oh, I brought with me this evening my husband, Ron Laduke, and my son, Jack's Laduke. He may be the youngest member to ever attend this meeting, but...
I think he's very close. We get a lot of scouts, but we welcome him very much. Thank you for sharing tonight with us. So, any questions from the audience? Boyd, no? I'll take a motion.
I'll move that we approve the issuance of an annual entertainment license for 415 Whiting Street, Inc., DVA, The Quarry, for the following. One, one to three musicians to perform on any of the following days, Sunday through Saturday from 7:00 PM to midnight. Two, three flat-screen televisions, seven days per week, from 7:00 PM to midnight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thanks. The Light Board. Jack and John, do you want to come join us? And then Will?
How are we doing? Welcome.
You?
Good to see you. Feeling better?
Gentlemen?
Oh, you.
Last time we saw you, right?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah, I think I got it.
This thing is a real...
Go for a ride.
David, we only have one candidate. So... David, come and join us. And why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a little about you and why you decided to put in for the Light Board?
Okay. Again, my name is Dave Ellison. I've been a resident of the town since '83, was on the AdCom Board from '06 to '11, and so for six years. And my goal here is to use my expertise. I've been an investor in this industry for 10 or 12 years. My longer career has been in the financial industry, investing in banks and bank-like companies. So, I bring a knowledge of the industry. Whether that's helpful or not, we'll find out, but I have an interest in sort of giving back to the town like I did in AdCom, and I think this is a way that I can use my expertise at work to hopefully keep the Light Board operating as good as it is. So, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
And is it clear that I need to run for election in April? Is that true?
No, but that's going to be one of the questions everybody asks you. And since we have an overwhelming number of candidates here... Well, I served with Dave on AdCom and I was absolutely delighted when I heard he was putting his name in for this because he was also the liaison for a number of years to the Light Board, Light Plant, and learned its operations, learned the financials, and was very good, frankly. So, I will turn it over to... Actually, let's start with John. Do you want to ask him any questions? This is your chance.
I think we're good. You know, I've heard nothing but good things about him, so I think we're good to go.
Jack?
I don't have a lot of questions. I just want to say that I think, to the other members who are voting, that I think the Light Plant has some great potentials beyond what we're doing now in order to enlarge our service to the community, and I think someone with Dave's background would be very, very helpful. So, we're looking forward to having him on the Board.
Paul? I'll start with you and then go to the other Paul.
As long as my colleague doesn't mind. David, I want to thank you for volunteering, first of all.
I'm here, the pension's great.
Oh, the pay is awesome, too.
But the town benefits, anytime somebody gets involved, as you know, and you've been involved for quite some time, and fortunately enough, some of the work, including the liaison work, was with the Light Plant and the Board, so that's great news. And an aside, it makes it easier because sometimes we get a number of very qualified candidates, so we're happy that it's you and then obviously the opportunities were there for other people, but the right man or the right person has come forward for the job, so we're happy.
I appreciate that.
Hey, how are you? I remember you from the Advisory Committee, so I don't really have any questions, per se. Thank you for stepping forward. I'd like to formally thank Mr. Foskett for his long term of service. You know, his resignation was quietly done, but his service, I think, has been felt by everybody who enjoys electrical power in this town. So, I think you've got some big shoes to fill there, my friend.
Well, as an aside, I got to know Walter many years ago. He was my son's Little League baseball coach, so that's when I got to know him. It's probably, God, it's got to be almost 20 years ago, so I've known him for a long time.
Well, I wish you good luck in the position.
Yep. Thank you.
Walter's service will be missed, but it's nice to see someone of your quality filling the shoes. And we should also recognize Paul Henry, the General Manager, is in our audience. And also thank him and his crews for the great job they take care of us and the great job that they do.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
Yes, I echo that.
We don't have any questions for him? This can't be. We got to ask him some hard stuff. Any questions from the audience?
I'll move that we appoint Dave Ellison to fill the unexpired term of Walter Foskett.
We'll do roll call vote?
Well, I'll second it to start.
All in favor?
Okay, roll call.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Done. Thank you.
Another unanimous.
You're in. It's unanimous.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Now, you have to get to work.
Yes.
Those lights on.
I'm going to be out of town next Tuesday if I don't miss the first meeting unless they move the date.
Oh, you didn't tell us that. Thank you so much. I think you're going to be a terrific addition.
I think we made a great choice.
Now, we are running so far ahead of schedule.
Let's keep moving.
Well, Betty, keep me on track. What can we move up and what not?
You can vote to open the warrant. You have a vote on opening the warrant.
Why don't we do that?
Okay. I'll do that, if you want.
Yeah, let's...
I move that we open the warrant to reinsert zoning articles for the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals and to close the warrant for the 2015 Annual Town Meeting.
Sir.
Let's take a moment. Betty, if you would explain what happened here.
By our bylaws, zoning articles are due December 1, and we did receive zoning articles from both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals by December 1. They have evolved so much in the time that both Rail State Council and Town Council felt it was advisable to put the new version in the warrant so that they will... They'll be advertised and the hearings will then go forward.
Carol, could you hear that?
No.
I figured when you're moving around, we're opening and closing the warrant to insert a newer version of the Planning Board, Zoning Board warrant articles because they've changed so much since December 1. And for the audience, we will be hearing the articles here, probably mid-March. There's a long process now and I guess very actively involved. Paul, you're probably...
Somewhat involved.
I would say.
Working towards completion.
And we'll bring... We don't vote on them, the Advisory Committee and Planning votes, but we're going to have them heard on TV. It wasn't done last year and there was some fallout at town meetings, so we will have them in here and go through each one of them so everybody can ask their questions in another forum. Some of these are very complex. Some, I guess, are going to be controversial.
There's always that potential with zoning articles. I'd just like to remind the residents that the Planning Board has public hearings and for anybody that has even the remotest interest in some of the subject matter, please go to them and voice your opinion because they're the ones that take the votes on these things.
And the Advisory Committee.
Planning Board reports the town meeting, but yes, you are correct.
I would... And it's good that we're having the meetings and they're televised, and I would hope and I would encourage the advisory, if they're not to be televised, that they should be. I at least understood that there has been some movement in that direction, but I don't know if that would apply here, but not everybody can get to these meetings. Paul made a good point, you know, to attend, but there's plenty of people that are not able to for reasons, and again, I would just hope that the advisory would also televise the meetings.
Maybe we could make a call...
Can you explain a tiny bit about what some of the articles are so I can include those?
I actually would fall all over words, but if Mr. Healy can...
Well, one of the proposed bylaws is a accessory dwelling unit initiative. It's not clear whether, you know, some are part of it. We've got an issue with respect to two-family units. Presently, that's done by a special permit, but it's limited to certain age houses. That's in a state of flux at this point due to interpretations of the Attorney General's position. There are others, but frankly, I haven't gone through them, so...
They should call the planning board or something.
Mary Savage-Stonemuth could brief you quite well on any of this.
Carol, that's probably a good idea for you to go visit Mary and get a little...
Yeah. The CVA has submitted some as well, which is a little, you know, that's different from the past, although it's entirely appropriate, but usually it's almost all Planning Board-generated. I'm not sure whether there are any citizen...
There was one citizen petition.
Is there? Okay. And that would be someone who submitted a petition, you know, who's a resident of the town as opposed to it springing out of the Planning Board.
When was the warrant deadline? When was the deadline?
I think it was January 15.
Well, for zoning, it's December 1, and for all other warrant articles, it's January 20. And I can attest to Betty was very busy on the 20th. Okay. So, thank you for doing that. Betty, what else can we do? Because Greg's up at 7:30, but I was told we have to wait till 7:30. This went way quicker than we thought.
It certainly did.
Can we do... I was going to... Can we do the Code of Business Conduct or Nelson really wanted to be here, but...
Nelson wanted to hear it, but if... Either that or you can do Selectmen Reports, but that's probably not going to take you 15 minutes, okay?
Probably not. Not much. We're all running around on warrant articles and budgets.
You're just taking a first pass at the Code of Conduct tonight?
Yep. Just actually putting it on the table. And I'll tell you what, when Nelson gets here, we can ask him if he wants to say anything.
Sure.
The Code of Business Conduct for Selectmen was adopted somewhere in 2007-ish, but then it disappeared. And in talking with Nelson and the Town Administrator Bylaw Committee, he asked if we would consider bringing this back, and I think it's a spectacular idea. It kind of closes the loop. We have codes of conduct for every group, but we don't have an accepted one for the Board of Selectmen. So, however it got lost, it doesn't matter. It's back on the table. I asked for the most recent copy that anyone could find, and what I'd ask my colleagues tonight is, take this and look at it. I have a bunch of changes to it based on the TA Bylaw Committee and also just the environment has changed since 2007. So, I'd like this to be the beginning of a discussion, but then the eventual vote to adopt a Code of Business Conduct. Mr. Healy, comments?
I remember this period from my own experience on the Planning Board because I know that we voted to adopt a Code of Conduct and in fact did, even though the... I don't know what happened on the third floor. I pretty much stayed on the second and kept quiet, but we voluntarily assumed a code towards each other, members of the public, towards our planning administrator. And, you know, I don't really think that it's been a problem for the Planning Board to stick to it, so it's been a good thing. I think it's a good idea, so I don't have a problem doing anything like this. Establishes the bright lines and the no-go zones and things like that, you know.
Paul?
No, I wasn't familiar with it. I did speak to Ted about it briefly, and I don't know if there was a question about whether it was enacted or not, but for a discussion, I assume it was. But it was a few years ago, and I think the Board should weigh in and at least have some thoughts about it, and if we can put something in writing that doesn't fade away on us, we can use it for everybody's benefit, I'd be happy to do it.
Good. How about if... I don't know if we can do this in a week. Maybe, because next week's going to be a busy week. And we have a half an hour before we have the joint session with the Advisory Committee on CPC, and I would urge everybody to watch that. And we're trying to get the whistleblower bylaw on the agenda for next week, so maybe we could do a first pass of this. If not, we'll move it to the week after because I know when I did a quick read-through it based on what's going on with the TA bylaw, I saw some things I would like to change in here. The world changes.
Indeed, it does.
Okay. So, we're in agreement? We'll do something. Excellent.
We are in agreement.
Let's do Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator and Selectmen Reports. Betty, do you have anything?
I don't, other than to say that tomorrow is the Mass Municipal Conference, which has some very interesting topics that I think will... I understand you're going as well?
Yep. And Baker's going to be the keynote speaker in the morning.
He's going to do one of the addresses in the morning, yes.
And then Karen Polito is going to do the...
Women elected municipal officials lunch.
So, it sounds really good, and there's a lot of very good workshops that hopefully we'll get to go to.
Very good.
That's it?
That's it.
And we should say Ted came down with a terrible cold, which is why he's not here and why we're not doing the debt management presentation.
Oh, and I should mention that we did get a fair amount of warrant articles in. I think the number is 54, 55? Is that right, Joe?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, sorry. Forty-seven.
Okay. Wow.
Here, I'm going to be easy.
Okay, if you say so.
Hey, I believe in the Easter Bunny, too, so...
Okay.
Paul, what do you have?
Let's see. Last Saturday, I went to the accessory, the ADU Bylaw Committee. We had a three-hour meeting at the Public Library. I think we're having another meeting. We're talking about in-law apartments, folks. We're talking about, you know, housing options for our citizens, our residents, those, you know, older folks who live in homes, want to stay there, not really interested in the Linden Ponds model, but want to have, you know, an option. Trying to figure that out, noodle it out so that the character of the town is preserved and the concerns of the neighbors are addressed effectively. There's been nine meetings. We're going on number 10 now, so we continue to work with that. You know, zoning takes a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and it's oftentimes difficult to pass something if there's, you know, strenuous opposition. So, we're trying to address some of the concerns ahead of time, front-load it so that we can craft a response. It's been a very, very good effort, and the people that sit on the committee are doing a great job. My hats are off to them. I can tick them off by name, but I'll hold. We had an excellent meeting Tuesday night with the working group. We had a couple of folks come in from the state, and we were talking about infrastructure financing options. That was a very interesting meeting. That was cableized.
Oh, it is? Oh, good.
Yeah. And I mean...
Some of us were at other meetings.
Yeah, yeah, no. And, you know, just to kind of swing back to that whole, you know, point about televising the meetings, as I understand it, that's done on a committee-type basis, like we have it. I think it's good. I like the idea of televising the meetings. You know, I know that not all committees kind of feel that way. I know the Advisory Committee has... They vote on which meetings they want televised. It's not an across-the-board policy. I also know that, you know, the Planning Board has a different view of it, too. So, I would hope that at some point in the not-too-near-distant future that every meeting is publicized through cable. I just think it's a good idea.
Great idea.
I think so, too.
Because you can't go to every meeting. You can't, and I can't, but there are some that I want to see.
Yep.
And the ability to just kind of sit down on the chair and hit play is a good thing. So, I'd encourage all my fellow residents that, you know, are on these committees, you know, if the cable option is available to you, try and take it because I just think it adds to the citizens' understanding and appreciation of how government operates, for better or worse, but in my view, it's for the better.
I think it's absolutely key to try and get the South Hingham Study Group televised because there are so many good presentations.
We do. We've had a few, not every one, but not because we don't want to. We just... Sometimes it's just a question of logistics, to be honest with you.
Can you summarize what happened at the meeting Tuesday night?
We had two people come in from the state. One was John Sisson, I believe, and the other was a woman, very knowledgeable, both from different agencies, and they were talking about options that are available to municipalities with respect to state financing and the trigger, the several different models. I grabbed one of the handout and gave it to Ted so that he'd have it, but it's on cable, so you can see it. It's maybe an hour and a half long, not too bad, but to me, the hook, if you will, was the attractiveness of something that created jobs, new jobs. The state likes that. And, you know, a 15- or 20-year horizon is not something that we should shy away from. I mean, we have to look over the horizon. Can't be afraid of doing that.
Do they come with money?
They come with financing. There's $300 million in this pool, but it's a first come... It started out at $600 million, and there's 300 left, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis. So, you know, if it takes us five years to get our act together and we go and start applying, you know, using some of these programs, there's no guarantee that the money's going to be there.
Is the Olympic movement going to suck up the money?
You know, it's funny you say that because this morning on the radio, apparently there's a lot of outreach going on and by, you know, people proposing to, you know, have the Olympics here in Boston. I don't think it'd be a bad idea to have somebody down here and talk about that as it impacts, you know, the town because we have, you know, a boat that comes into the shipyard. You know, the Olympics, 2024 is, what, nine years away? That's not that long, so...
I don't want it to come that fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it does. And if it is what it could be and, you know, we've prepared, it could be a very positive thing for the town, so maybe that's something we can do in the future, near future.
For which?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten? No, I don't think so.
Not tonight.
Nothing.
Yeah, don't, Fred. Be nice to us. Let's see, what do I have? We had Dennis's going-away retirement party, Dennis Corcoran, last Friday. It was very, very nice gathering. He really is an absolute class act. Library trustees last night had their meeting and reaffirmed the proclamation that was read about Dennis. They gave him a beautiful picture of the library, and then the library is going to have a picture of Dennis hanging in it. So, that's really exciting.
Like an old judge.
Future...
Like an old judge.
Like an old judge. Well, no, a young judge.
Retired judge.
A young, retired judge. And the Futures Task Force at the library has just completed a patron survey, which they went over last night, and it's absolutely terrific. It will be up on the library website at some point, so I ask everybody to go up and read through it. Eventually, you're going to be hearing about a move to reinvigorate the library and redo the inside so that we keep ahead, and that's what the Futures Task Force is. What do we need to do to stay at the leading edge like Dennis has gotten us to now? So, all of that's going to be coming, and I didn't bring my notes, but from memory, the girls' track team continues to really beat up on everybody. Wonderful job. It's probably a wrong term, but they finished second in the state D3 relay, D3 track meet, and a lot of records were broken. A lot of our girls did fabulously. So, it's written up in the Patriot Ledger from this past Monday. Go and find the article. It's just one accolade after another, so way to go, girls. And I think that's all I had.
Does the shot put record still stand, just out of curiosity?
I don't remember reading about that one.
Okay.
Greg, come join us on financial policy.
My daughter holds the shot put.
Rosamond?
That was one...
I'm going to have to find out. I don't remember reading that one.
She does. She's very strong on that issue.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
And just as an introduction, the Advisory Committee owns the financial policy for the town. It started about 1985. Peter Keehue and the group then developed the first one and put it in writing. In 2008, we began the rewrite, When the World Changed, and that took like two years to complete. And I started it. Jerry Seeland continued, and Karen Johnson, I believe, finished it up. The world has changed again, and in 2008 is when the bottom dropped out. We survived all that due to good management and the Advisory Committee, and now the world has changed again, and it was time to update... And now, the world has changed again, and it was time to update the financial policy. So, Greg has done a fabulous job. This addresses every question I had. And the world changing now, we are seeing record rates for short-term borrowing, which is good and bad, because it's a way of bringing Wall Street to Central Street. And it kind of sets you up for the feeling that you can borrow more, because you're borrowing for such little money. However, being a smart town, having a wonderful, reality-based advisory committee, we're not exactly going to be Wall Street. So, let me turn it over to Greg, and maybe the best way to do this, if you'll walk through the changes, and then we'll ask questions with each section.
Sure. So, let me just recap briefly, or add on to what you said about the process. So, we had last updated the policy in fiscal '14, so which was essentially last year, and we weren't, would not normally have updated it for another three years under our existing protocol. But a couple of things happened since last year that warranted us taking another look at it. So, we put together a subcommittee that included myself and three other members of the advisory committee. We had a couple of open meetings. No one attended. That's okay. I wouldn't expect anybody to. Where we talked about some of the changes, and then we've discussed this a couple of times in open advisory committee meetings, and we have general consensus on the changes at the advisory committee level. We have not yet taken a vote. Under the process, as you stated, Irma, the policy is sort of the responsibility of the advisory committee, but we do coordinate the review of it with both the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. And after we obtained consensus at the advisory committee level, that we had a document worth presenting to the other boards, that's what we did. We sent you a copy for the Board of Selectmen. Ray Estes was given a copy at the same time, and I know the school committee has had it, and I'm actually going to meet with them on Monday to go through a similar process. And depending on what's discussed tonight and at that meeting Monday, we will quite likely have a vote at the advisory committee on Tuesday, next Tuesday, to affirm the policy as presented, and then it'll be posted on the website. So, that's the process. So, the changes, there were really three principal changes. One was, and the first change is, it'd be on page two, if anybody has a copy. If you happen to have a copy that's in color, the changes are in red ink. If you don't, your copy's not in color, you'd see that it was in letter font. But essentially, paragraphs 12 through 15, under the financial management section of the policy, were added. Those paragraphs were not in there before, and those paragraphs essentially address the concept of unused levy capacity. Prior to last year's town meeting and the authorization of the fiscal '15 budget, the town really never had unused levy capacity before. Just briefly, unused levy capacity is essentially when the amount that the town needs to spend to operate in a given year is less than what it's able to tax the homeowners. And so, last year was the first year, at least in my memory, that we were able to achieve that. And it is actually a very desirable place to be. The rating agencies look very favorably on unused levy capacity. There actually are a number of other communities in Massachusetts that have had longstanding records of unused levy capacity, including some of the towns that we consider benchmark communities, and some that you'd be surprised that would have unused levy capacity. But anyhow, we had not had, previously, our financial policy did not address it, so we thought it was appropriate to at least introduce the concept into the financial policy and also discuss how it should be addressed in future budget cycles. And essentially, that's what those paragraphs are. So, do they have any questions on that?
Yeah. Can you maybe give a little simpler explanation of unused levy capacity? And I don't, I mean...
I'll try.
Okay.
So, in any given year, basically, the town can levy as taxes, basically what they bill to all the taxpayers, including the homeowners, the private residences, as well as all the commercial property owners in town. They can, the amount that can be taxed is essentially equal to the amount we taxed last year, plus any new growth, new growth being basically additions or significant improvements that are made to an existing house, the construction of a new house, or other, even a commercial property, that gets added to the prior-year base, if you will. And then, under Proposition 2.5, you could add 2.5% to that. And so, that's the levy capacity in any given year. So, it always goes up. And essentially, again, I've been on advisory for six years, and I'm sure in many years prior to that, the town's budget has always been structured to essentially spend all of that money. And when I say spend, in fairness, some of that spending included putting money into reserve, so it wasn't...
And OPEB and things like that.
Right, right. It wasn't like we were just spending it to spend. I mean, there were appropriate uses that included putting money away, or taking care of deferred liabilities and the like, and also buying some well-needed assets and making improvements to existing assets. We got to last year, as part of the fiscal '15 budget process, we were able to come to a point where essentially, we realized that we could operate the town and meet the needs of all the departments, as well as take care of some of the needs that had been deferred from prior years, not all of them, but some of them, and at a minimum, provide the level of service that people expected from town government, the minimum level, and beyond, I would say, as well, without spending the entire amount that we were entitled to, under the formula of last year's base, new growth plus 2.5%. So, the amount that was, is being taxed in fiscal 2015, the amount that you'll be paying a week and a half from now, collectively, is less than it legally could be. So, everybody's getting a little bit of a break. That does not necessarily mean that everybody is getting the same amount. Obviously, every year, we do a reevaluation of the property. Some people's taxes go up as a result of that, others' people's taxes go down. And your taxes were going to go up anyhow, because of costs associated with a number of things, but the largest component of that was certainly the new middle school. But they didn't go up as much as they otherwise would have. I think collectively, and I apologize, I don't have the exact number, I think the amount of unused levy capacity for this year is, I think, $400,000.
I think you're right.
So, that's $400,000 that the town didn't tax, that it could have. And that number is essentially embedded in the tax base going forward, until such time as the town decides to either use that amount, which they can do, and there's no vote beyond the normal town meeting vote to approve the budget required to do that, or we could make it permanent with an underwrite, which is essentially the opposite of an override, where we collectively, as a town, through a town meeting vote and a ballot vote, would agree to permanently lower our tax base by a certain amount. And then, that would be the new base to which new growth and the 2.5% increment would be added each year. So, right now, we've got, like I said, $400,000 of unused levy capacity, which was created in, for the fiscal '15 budget. I think it's much too early in the current budget process to know whether we would create any other unused levy capacity as real to the fiscal '16 budget, and whether or not we will perhaps use some of that prior unused levy capacity. We're not far enough along in the budget process to really speak to those points.
That, you explain that incredibly well. This is a very difficult concept.
Can I ask a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
Obviously, you've been doing this a number of years, and, you know, obviously, I was involved in a kind of a tangentially way with the school committee, and maybe town meeting and so forth. So, if you could explain, and I know you probably already have, I just make sure I said it, a couple of things. The upside is that we're not taxing to the extent we can.
Right.
In terms of the policy that I'm looking at, the changes, how do we, if we needed it for a certain, because you know, I mean, I know going into the budgets, people come in with requests, and we never, you know, in many cases, we don't fund the full amount. See, some people could say, "Well, we have this extra money, why aren't we using it?" Which is people should have said and will say. So, what is the mechanism, if the policy's implemented, to go beyond, you know, the same level?
Right. That's a good question, Paul. I think the policy articulates a preference that the unused levy capacity not be used except in extraordinary circumstances. We purposely did not define what extraordinary circumstances are, because they could change, and what might be an extraordinary circumstance in 2015 might be different than what one might be in 2020. But in terms of a mechanism, there really isn't a particular mechanism. So, for example, you know, if we wanted to do an override, there is a very specific mechanism that requires a town meeting vote, and then a ballot vote for an override.
You mean override beyond the 2.5%?
Right.
Okay.
In order to use the unused levy capacity, all we have to do is create a budget, a balanced budget, that would require the town to tax at the prior-year base, plus new growth, plus the 2.5%, plus the unused levy capacity. So, the unused levy capacity is out there and can be used in any budget cycle, as long as it's approved by town meeting. And it's a simple, the same vote we take every year, and a simple majority vote required. And what we tried to do in the policy is make it clear that, if that happens, and there may be circumstances where that would happen, that there'd be a full, transparent discussion of that process through the advisory committee, through the Board of Selectmen, school committee, if that's one of the uses for the money, or whatever the situation might be, and that people are aware that, in fact, we are using this amount. Because what will happen, when the unused levy capacity is used, your taxes will go up significantly, and, well, I should say significantly, they will go up more than they otherwise would have. And particularly, for example, if we were to do it this year, and I'm not suggesting that there's a plan to, or that anybody intends to, but if we were to do it this year, we would go from a year where people got a tax break, to a year where they essentially paid a premium. So, it's almost like a double hit in one year, and I think we want to avoid that, because I think people would be put off by that instability. And I think it would certainly undermine the credibility of the various constituencies, such as advisory and selectmen, who are involved in the budget process. You know, people are, I'm sure people are happy to pay less in taxes, but their degree of unhappiness that would come from paying more in taxes unexpectedly would far outweigh whatever goodwill you might generate in a year like last year.
So, just one other question on that. So, I know we have a great rating in AAA, and I think that was one of the discussions in the policy, that, you know, it obviously, it's noticed by agencies. So, and I don't know this, I'm just asking, we have had a great run without the levy being reduced. So, is, what effect, I mean, in other words, your caution was, hey, let's not go back. And I know there's no discussion to do anything, we're just hypothetically speaking here. Since we've done so well, and we had spent up to that amount, is it a serious concern, or is it just something, maybe just prudence that we do it?
Well, I think it's more in the case of prudence than, I don't think there's a critical, we're not at a critical point, but I can tell you, you know, a couple of years ago, we went through a re-review by the rating agencies, and I forget exactly which year, but we got sort of some cautionary guidance from them, that we needed to, you know, get our house in order in a few areas and shore up the fund balance. And we took appropriate actions, and I think we've more than addressed the concerns that the rating agencies have. But in doing some of the research around the policy, one of the things we looked at, and I apologize to the good folks of Newton, Massachusetts, but when they went through the same process, one of the things that was brought out as a risk was the fact that they don't have any unused levy capacity. And they're a AAA community, just like us. I mean, honestly, they're a much larger town. But it is something that the rating agencies pay attention to. And I think it's one of the things, if you never had it, they're not going to say, "Well, you should have it," but once you have it, they're going to pay attention to it.
One of the things we did, if I'm not mistaken, is we raised our, was it the fund balance?
Right, yes.
To a level that either was suggested, or we thought it was good, between, I think it was 16 and 20, and we're somewhere in the middle of that?
Right.
So, we're in a very good position?
Yes. And just, one way I think about unused levy capacity, it's sort of a component of fund balance, it's sort of an off-the-balance-sheet piece of fund balance. So, in other words, if our fund balance is, just to pick a round number, $20 million, and we have unused levy capacity of $400,000, so we essentially have $20,400,000 available to us as a reserve, if you will. The difference is, is $20 million's in the bank, and $4 million is still sitting with the taxpayers. So, in order, I mean, $400,000, so in order to access that, we would have to raise taxes, whereas if we wanted to access fund balance, we could just do that through a vote and without, no one would pay for that out of their taxes. And I think that's the point, is, you know, let's manage fund balance and use that as necessary to address whatever emergent requirements we have, as long as we stay within the parameters that we've identified are appropriate, you know, the 15% to 20%, and do use that before we dip into the unused levy capacity.
That's a good point to make, and I'm sure the people at home are, you know, listening, that's a good point to make.
He picked the number 400,000 as unused. Does that number remain static, or does it change over time?
If we continue to tax at the base, plus new growth, plus 2.5%, the 400,000 stays static. But if we dip into it, so we tax more than that, it would go down. If we tax less in future years, the unused levy capacity goes up. And in some towns, it fluctuates every year. They sort of, it doesn't fluctuate by a lot, but they do use it as a little bit of a slush fund. In other towns, they built it up because they had an extraordinary circumstance that allowed them to do it, and they've been slowly eating away at it over time to sort of stabilize the tax rate a little bit. But they, eventually, their unused levy capacity will come down to zero.
Paul?
To illustrate that in real terms, if we had a very bad winter, where the snow removal budget went to $1 million, would that be something that we'd see the unused tax levy dipped into?
No. To the extent, so normally, when we have an extraordinary year for snow removal costs, at least in the years I've been with advisory, we've always been able to fund that through a reserve fund transfer, through the 550 we put away. But let's say we had an above and beyond, and we had a hurricane in the fall, and then we had several big snowstorms. We might have had those types of years, like 2003, 2004. I'm not sure, it was before I was involved, but if the need for, say, snow removal costs exceeded what was budgeted and what was available in the reserve fund, I think the posture we'd want to take is to go into the fund balance before we go into the unused levy capacity. And that's what fund balance is for. And that assumes that fund balance is at a healthy level, which it is today, but, you know, as Irma will tell you, in 2009, we wouldn't have had that luxury.
We had very little.
Right.
And going south.
It would be a truly extraordinary step
Right.
to increase the taxes out of this particular fund then.
Right. And I think the point we tried to make in the policy is, if we're going to do it, we should have the same discussion that we would have if we were going to have an override. Because that's, it's effectively what it is. It's accomplishing the same thing.
Okay.
But because it doesn't include the ballot vote component, it's a less public and democratic process. So we want to make sure that there's as much open discussion around that as possible.
Your question's a good one about snow and ice. In the levy capacity, that goes into our operating budget. So once it's in there, it continues year after year after year. Where snow and ice depends on Mother Nature and how well Randy begs Mother Nature. And that's an event year by year. Do you want to explain a little bit what an under-ride is?
Well, sure. So I think most people are generally familiar with the concept of an override. We've had a few and, you know, I generally use the term override to include debt exclusion votes as well. But an under-ride is essentially where a municipality takes the current tax base and reduces it so that there's a new starting point for the tax levy that is smaller than what it had been before. So I forget what our base is, but, you know, just for argument's sake, let's say it's $100 million. We could vote to reduce it to $99 million. And that's the most we could tax in that year. And then the next year would be 99 million plus new growth plus
2.5%.
2.5%. But that requires the same process that an override requires, which is a town meeting vote and then a subsequent ballot vote. I believe, and I apologize, I don't know this for sure, but I believe Plymouth enacted an under-ride a few years ago. Because they had a significant new commercial development that brought in a lot of tax revenue and they, I think, started to have some stability around their school situation and found out they were taxing and bringing in more money than they needed.
Thank you.
How's that viewed by the rating agencies?
I think it depends. If you truly have the capacity to do that, I think it's considered an element of good fiscal management. But if you're doing it to, for political reasons or just to appease a vocal constituency, and by doing so, you're going to underfund significant, particularly, infrastructure needs, I think that would be looked on unfavorably.
It's a very big move.
Right. Yeah. And it's one of those things, it's pretty hard to reverse, I imagine, once you've done it.
And that's why we don't hear many of them.
Right.
Do you want to go into the next part?
Sure. So the second part was actually a bit of more of a technical correction and it deals with capital outlay. We've always had sections of the policy that deal with capital outlay. But there was a bit of inconsistency between the policy and what was going on in actual practice. Specifically, the policy allowed for items of value greater than $10,000 to be considered capital assets. The actual, the departments, including the school department, were using a $5,000 number for managing capital assets versus expenditures. There's no, we didn't have a specific reason for 10,000. When we set the 10,000 threshold, which I think was set probably prior to 2008, I think that's a fairly common number that you see in commercial business. I think whether it's applicability to a municipal setting depends on the size of the town, what the needs of the town are. I don't think anybody has a problem with the 5,000 that the departments are using. And it's certainly not the intention of the advisory committee to undermine the management responsibilities of either the school superintendent or the town administrator. And if they think $5,000 is a better way to manage their departments, then we would certainly support that. So the policy was updated to provide that flexibility. So it sets a threshold of 10,000 but allows for the department heads, or excuse me, the town administrator and the school committee to set a lower threshold, not to be less than $5,000 as they deem appropriate. And then we also clarified the definition of what items should be treated as capital assets and which items should be treated as operating expenses. And specifically, we tried to draw a distinction between items that are more maintenance in nature versus things that extend the useful life of an asset. And then also a restriction on bundling smaller items together that in and of themselves would not meet the threshold of a capital asset, but if you put them all together, would exceed the 5 or $10,000 threshold. And that's a practice that we certainly want to discourage. And I think for the most part, the department heads have been doing that on their own. And we just thought it was, made sense to memorialize that in the policy.
You know, it's interesting. I think this is excellent. When I started on capital, they had just gone from 3,000 to 5,000. And that was 2002. So this is a recognition also that times change.
Right.
And the 10,000, I think we went to that a few years ago. I don't, I might have even still been on advisory with you. But this is great. Questions?
No, thank you.
No, I think I've asked my questions and I appreciate you coming by and
No, he's got a little more. Don't let him off the hook. No, we're not letting him off the hook that easy.
So the third piece and the final piece of the changes has to do with debt. And in particular, the question around whether a town should finance capital needs with long-term or short-term debt. And I guess this is a little bit, we were going to have a presentation after this that was going to speak to that issue in, I think, a little more depth, but that's been deferred. But actually, what's in the policy by design is not very prescriptive. I think there are two principal points that we tried to make here, maybe three. One is, we expressed a default preference for long-term versus short-term debt for a couple of reasons. One, I think people tend to favor the stability that would go along with a longer-term financing arrangement. And by that, I mean, if you go long-term, all I did is fixed rate. So you know, if you take out a 20-year note, you know what you're going to be paying for the next 20 years. And you don't have to worry about what interest rates do. So that's, as I said, the default preference. But we also acknowledge that there are circumstances, and we've been in those circumstances for the last couple of years, where the short-term rates are just so low, it would be imprudent not to at least consider taking advantage of those in certain circumstances. And I think, you know, Ted and Gene have done a very good job of managing that over the past couple of years. But the question that I think everybody is asking, how long will this rate environment continue? And unfortunately, you know, no one has a reliable enough crystal ball to answer that question definitively. But I think the one thing everybody does know is it won't last forever. And we don't want to be in a position where we're locked into a situation where we can't refinance, or we're forced to refinance our short-term debt because it's come and due. And the long-term rates are much higher than they were when we originally entered into the debt in the first place. And there, you know, how much will rates go up in a given year, which, in a year is sort of the period we look at because that's generally how long the short-term instruments are out there for. You know, no one knows. I mean, it might be as little as a quarter of a point, but it could be a point, point and a half. And with the amount of debt where we have, those numbers are significant.
That's, we're sitting on $45 million of short-term debt right now.
So, you know, it's an important question to ask. We don't feel, though, that the advisory committee should, you know, here today tie the town administrator, the town finance director, or the treasurer's hands by creating a policy that says you have to do long-term debt in these situations and you can do short-term debt in other situations. Instead, like I said, we, I think we've expressed a default preference for long-term debt, but still leaving it up to the executive branch of the government to decide what's best. The other pieces that we've added are, there's a, now, we've put in place an expectation that as part of the annual budget process, when we talk about the debt service requirement of the budget, that a discussion of the risks and uncertainties associated with the debt posture of the town be part of that discussion. And that has been happening, particularly in the last couple of years. And so this is just intended to memorialize that, that every year, the expectation is the town finance director would come to the advisory committee and the board of selectmen and explain where we are, what the risks are in the foreseeable future, and what the options are, and then make a recommendation as to the best way to handle that. And then in addition to that, so that's happening now, like I said, we've also put in an expectation that that presentation would be updated at least quarterly. So that'll give the town a little bit of flexibility and perhaps allow us to react a little bit more quickly if need be. If we're only doing it once a year, that's not going to give us an opportunity to really address some of the issues that might come up. So if we have this update at least quarterly, we'll be able to make more informed decisions. So those are the two principal components of that part of the policy. I think it's important to remember that, you know, the policy is just that. It's a policy. It's not a bylaw. There's no legal authority to it. I think, though, the three principal constituencies that have been bound by it, which is advisory, school committee, and selectmen, have honored it over the last several years. And I think we'd all expect it will continue. And I think it's working well the way it's designed.
I think, I like this because it's not political. It's done by the advisory committee. So you don't get political sway on which way to go. This is very good. You addressed every piece that I was concerned or raised issues about. I mean, Paul?
I thank the advisory committee for its work in general and your effort in particular on this and good explanation. Thank you.
Just had one question. I think he answered it though, but the policy changes, the additions to the policy that we're putting in there, in this particular case, are not a reaction to the town using short-term debt to the extent they are. This is just something that you guys, for whatever reason, felt was appropriate to add?
Right. We don't see a problem, if that's what you're asking. Instead, what we, we just want to make sure, though, that there are procedures in place to ensure appropriate oversight. But we're not suggesting that there's something that has to be fixed. And I think, you know, that when you have the presentation on the long-term versus the short-term, a lot of this will make more sense.
You said that you haven't voted on this yet or you
Right. So the way we have not. So the way this will work is, we've discussed it and everybody on the advisory committee has reviewed the draft and provided input. And then the processes that we then presented to the selectmen and the school committee to get their input. And, you know, in the two or three times I've been involved with this process, it's always been very cooperative. No one's really had any big issues or concerns. So I'm hopeful that that will continue to be the case. We'll find out, I guess, on Monday night. And then, but, you know, and then sometimes people might point out something that might be an inconsistency that needs to be fixed or even something as simple as typos or whatever. But once all that information's gathered, and like I said, that process should be complete Monday night, we'll vote on it Tuesday.
Do you need a vote from us?
I was just going to, you don't anticipate any further changes than there could be, but maybe just cleaning up?
I don't, there might be some technical corrections of typos and things like that. I would say to you, if anything changed significantly, we would come back to you.
Sure.
Do you need a vote from us at some point?
I don't.
Okay. This, you did a great job. This is very difficult to explain to people.
Well, there were a lot of people who were involved. So I can't remember everybody's name right now, but
Well, you remember the important stuff.
Right.
On the policy.
Thank you to all of them for the work.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Greg. Nelson, do you want to come up for a minute? We already did the code of conduct, but if you would like to make a couple of comments, we've all agreed that we're going to look at the draft. But if you'd like to come up, because I did use your name, that I had chatted with you, and that we would like to bring this back to the table, get some input from the three of us
Okay.
and then vote on it and put it back in place.
Wonderful. Nelson Ross, 18 Bradford Road, Hingham. The code of conduct, I'm trying to remember when it was adopted. I think it was
In 2007.
2007.
2007, yes. And it had been in place and I think was working pretty well. I know that when I was a member of the screening committee for successors to Charlie Cristello, we relied on it in discussions with prospective candidates. And not long after the new town administrator took his office, it was withdrawn, as I understand it. And I think that it sets standards for the selectmen. I'm not saying that every piece of it has to be exactly as it was. You're going to want to look it over and see what works. But I think it was very important because then everybody knew the rules of the road, so to speak. So I would encourage you, as I said to you, to reinstate it. I think it would add to the stability of town hall and the selectmen's office. And I think that's always good. Be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement. We need to do this.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Now we just got to fiddle around with it.
If I can help, let me know.
We'll be in touch, guaranteed, Nelson. Who, Nelson, are you doing the firefighters' union, Emma?
No, Marie.
Is it Marie?
Marie and Jack.
Marie and Jack, do you want to come up with the chief and is it Lieutenant McIntyre? Who's, and take us through this. Welcome. And if you'd introduce yourselves. And Lieutenant McIntyre, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay. Come on up. Well, you can sit in Ted's chair. You can sit in the big chair.
Chief wants to, was it Chief?
Chief, would you like to join them?
No, no, no. This is their show tonight.
Marie, Marie Harris from the personnel board and
Jack Manning.
Jack Manning. And?
Lieutenant William McIntyre, Fire Department.
And the personnel board is pleased to present this memorandum of agreement between the Town of Hingham and the firefighters who are represented by the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2398. This is a three-year contract which provides a 2% general wage increase on July 1st, 2014, 2015, and 2016. Also, on April 1st, 2015, there will be an equity adjustment which will roll the existing EMT and EMT paramedic stipend into the salary. And a little background on this is that a recent arbitrator's award, the decision found in favor of rolling the stipend into the base pay. We asked David Basler to do a survey of our 19 comparable towns and 16 towns responded. And 11 of the 16 towns incorporated the stipend into the base pay. So we also found that in looking at the comparable data of the 19 towns, it showed that we were below the midpoint for our officer positions. And historically, we have tried to be just north of the midpoint. So this placed us, this equity adjustment rolling placed us north of the midpoint, just north of the midpoint. Also, the firefighters will now be eligible for acting out-of-grade pay with a four-hour minimum hours worked. And acting out of grade is when a firefighter will take on the role of a lieutenant or an officer. And so now it will be a four-hour minimum hours worked. Also, the fire prevention officer will receive a stipend of $250 per week. And in the overtime provision, a firefighter who is now called into work between And in the overtime provision, a firefighter who is now called into work between the hours of 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM will be guaranteed a minimum of four hours of pay. And this was actually proposed by the town, because it was difficult to get people to come in between the hours of 10:00. So it was a three-hour callback pay, but now it went between the hours of 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM. It was increased from three hours to four hours. Also, a longevity payment. Employees with at least 25 years of service will receive a $1,000 longevity payment. And this keeps us, brings them up to where several of the other unions now are, other bargaining units in town. Effective January 1st, 2015, a firefighter with 20 or more years of service, who gives 12 months notice of his or her intention to retire, will receive upon retirement a $2,000 payment and any unexpended uniform allowance for the fiscal year. And this, this bonus, this $2,000 payment, it actually helps us with the recruitment part of the process, which can take in excess of six months. So this, this will help with the recruitment process for new firefighters. We also are pleased to announce that we have a new drug and alcohol testing policy that was worked out collaboratively by our team, along with the firefighters negotiating team. And I'm not sure if you know, but this, this is a, this drug and alcohol testing policy took the city of Boston five years to get this, to complete a drug and alcohol, complete the negotiations for a drug and alcohol policy. And we worked very collaboratively with the union and the team to get this. And now, all of the town's public safety unions now have a drug and alcohol testing policy. We're pleased with that. And we basically see this policy, and this contract, as a win-win for the town and for the employees. I'd like to thank David Basler, the Human Resources Director, for his excellent work in conducting the surveys and providing the town with comparable data from our 19 towns. Also, Town Administrator Ted Alexiades for his participation on the negotiating team. Ted was a very valuable member of the team, and having him present made the process move along faster. Chief Mark Duff and Deputy Bob Olson for their thoughtful insight into the issues surrounding the day-to-day operations. And also Lieutenant McIntyre, Union President, for his leadership, and Captain Steve Murphy, and also Dave Levinson, Chris Malanson, and Caitlin Shinney for maintaining a very positive and constructive tone throughout the negotiation process. Both parties came away feeling as though it was a very fair and equitable contract.
I think it's a great contract. A question, go back to the stipend.
Okay.
What, how much is that, that gets rolled into base? Is it one number, or is it depending on?
For the EMTs, it was one number. Do you remember, Steve, what that number is?
It used to be $38.60 a week, was on the previous contract. And then the paramedics was a separate pay rate, so the number was never really truly defined. It was roughly around, I think, about $5,000 difference, but don't quote me on that.
But the EMTs was 38, and then the EMT paramedic was a little bit higher?
Yes.
Was it 60, in the 60s?
Probably about that, yes.
Lieutenant McIntyre, would you like to say a few words?
Please. The contract process is usually a prolonged and difficult process. This process, I believe we had six meetings over the course of about four months, four and a half months. The input from both sides was greatly appreciated. It was a fluid and unbiased, so we say, negotiations. We brought our, our issues forward. We explained them at great length. The town took the time to look at them, understand them, questioned some of the things. I mean, you go into negotiations, everybody wants this, and, you know, they hope that they don't want that, and you got, it's a balancing act. It's never, it's never an easy process. You can't make everybody happy, but you try to make the majority of the people happy. And you can come away with some people feeling that it's a great contract, and other people feeling that it lacks in areas. And truth be told, there are some things that we probably could have emphasized a little bit more on, and, you know, that comes for, comes through the learning process. And we'll address those at the, the next time we come back to the contract negotiations table, and see if we can't resolve those issues as they come forward. But for the most part, I'd love to thank Nelson Ross for his expertise as the elder statesman for the town, and Ted for his guidance and direction, Marie, Jack Manning, and the rest of our team, and our attorney, Paul Heinz. I think that we had a great working relationship. The chief and the deputy were extremely well-versed in each of the areas that we needed to negotiate, and it was easy to be able to sit back and talk back and forth, and make sure that we all understood the reasons why we were asking for things. And not so much as that we understood the drug and alcohol policy part of it. That's a huge step for us at any union, to go into a drug and alcohol testing. But to take the words from our attorney, you don't want to work with somebody who's impaired, so to have a policy in place, it's a protection for both us and the town. And I think, as Marie put it, it's a win-win, because we're able to guarantee our own safety through our own members, and assure the town that, you know, they're going to get a response from clear-minded and unimpaired personnel. So I think that that given, it's a, it's a great situation that we're in now that contract is settled. And hopefully, as time goes on, we can, I say, address some of those issues that we still think are, need to be fine-tuned and adjusted. This operation changes daily. It's one of those operations where it's zero to 900 miles an hour in the blink of an eye. And the changes are always foregoing. When I came on the job, I never anticipated that I would be worried about weapons of mass destruction or clandestine drug laboratories. You know, you came to work to put out fires, but, you know, you put the wet stuff on the red stuff, and that was the job. But today, it's more technical rescue, it's more involved with exposure problems when it comes to chemicals and drugs and all kinds of things today. And it's just a, it's a changing world, and it's, and the fire service is evolving with the changes. It's just that with change becomes restriction, people want to push back, and they don't want to make the changes, and it's difficult for them to change. But over time, we'll continue to change, and the town has a, has a great fire department. The members of the Local 2398, regardless of how they feel, put their hot sauce into it every day. They respond. We get very few complaints, you know, regarding behavior or attitudes and things like that. Everybody goes out with a positive attitude to correct whatever problem that we're responding to, whether it be a water leak, or a cardiac arrest, or a building fire. It's, you know, it's anybody's guess from day to day.
Thank you. Paul?
Lieutenant, thank you very much for that. I applaud the department for its working so well with the Personnel Board, and thank you, members of the Personnel Board, for this work. I looked with interest at some of the terms here, and I'm pleased at the speed that common ground was reached. I think that's good for everyone. And, you know, having, you know, in the past, worked prolonged period without a contract, it's, it's good to see that's not the case here. So congratulations to one and all. Thank you so much, Personnel Board, firefighters for the town.
Thank you.
Good job.
I just wanted--
Mr. Paul?
Thank you. I'd like to echo what Paul said. We're very lucky to have such a great negotiating team in the Personnel Board, and Chief Duff, and Deputy Olson. I mean, they obviously there make this process a lot easier with the professionalism that they, they show. And what's probably as important to me personally is that the fire department and our union employees are happy and satisfied they're being treated well and treated fairly. So, I mean, I've said that with other unions and other employees that come to the town, but it's really important to me, so to hear you speak about that is comforting to me, and I'm glad that you're satisfied.
One of the items in the contract that I'm really pleased about is allowing people to kind of announce their retirement, and giving them the $2,000, or whatever amount it was. But having been on advisory for so long, and watched as the fire department went through vacancies, six, eight, which stresses the people that are there, because they have to work on overtime. And that's not so good. So being able to do some planning, so that the chief can work off the civil service list, I think is fantastic. So I, you know, you hear win-win. This one is. Nelson?
I just wanted to say--
Come on up.
Nelson Ross again. I just wanted to say that the, that proposal and several others came from the chief and the deputy. We do the negotiating, but in terms of the town's proposals, they, they come from the departments, and that's good. It's good. I mean, we're not, we come to you to make sure that you're comfortable with it through the town administrator, but I want to give credit to the chief and the deputy. This successful negotiations is largely attributable to them. Thank you.
Excellent. Chief, do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief. I think one of the things that we glazed over was the residency. Residency was, was one of the issues that we, we dealt with. And I am pleased to let the town know that, from our understanding, we have the most comprehensive residency program in the state as of the date right now.
Wow.
The provision of allowing people to reside outside the 10-mile limit from civil service is a hard-edged issue that's been met in many levels across the state for different reasons. And the ability for us to allow people to live outside the 10-mile limit is one thing, but the ability to recruit people from outside the 10-mile limit without imposing upon them to move closer to Hingham and disrupt their lives is a huge win for us. And that in itself was, was a, one of the key points of the contract for us, was to be able to let our people know that they could relax if they lived 11 and a half or 12 miles outside the 10-mile radius, or, you know, because it's not so much that it's the town that's going to come and get them, it's the law. You know, you can't supersede the law with a decree from the selectmen or a contractual clause. The law is the law. And if you're found to be outside that limit, as it was in one of our neighboring communities, it created a very bad atmosphere, and we wanted to avoid anything like that from ever happening here. Not that we felt that it would, but we felt that it was necessary for us to take the initiative to look at residency. And we are very appreciative of the town and the Personnel Board for understanding our reasons and working with us to create such a policy.
And that speaks to the quality of the men and women of the fire service. That's really, so you all have done an amazing job. Do we have any questions from the audience? Jack, you've been quiet. Did you want to say anything?
Not usually so. No, I, I've only been on the Personnel Board, or as you probably remember and know, for three years. I've sat through a couple of negotiations with the fire department. The process is extremely respectful. And frankly, I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that you're sitting across from people who, you know that if you have a problem at home, if there's a fire, you're going to pick up the phone, somebody's going to answer. And those people can certainly put their life on the line to come to the rescue. And I don't think that's lost on anybody, certainly on the negotiating team. And you have to respect the people you're sitting across from that come to work knowing that.
Yep.
So I think that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you. I'll take a motion.
I'll do it.
You want to do it?
Sure. I'll do it.
Okay.
Move to sign the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Hingham and the Hingham Permanent Firefighters Association, Local 2398, effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2017.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Congratulations.
And Billy, thank you for your 100 and how many years now of continuous family fire service?
It's 102.
102, and counting. And counting.
Yes.
Okay. Then, we're done with the agenda, so I recommend the board enter executive session to discuss strategy to collective bargaining, because discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. The board will not resume open session this evening. Vote by roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night, and we'll see you next week, and hopefully, everybody's going to be healthy.